Came out with us.
Yeah.
Swim, uh, Fishin? How do you do? He stays pretty long undercover on the department.
Didn't get the dimming open up so he sat in the sun all day long. Went home and passed out.
Meeting Monday because some of the Saturday was too much. I was surprised. I didn't want him to do that way. Got his finger pinched. Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting Wallyford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission order. Time is seven oh five, date is June seventh. And we're in the Robert Parisi Council chambers. Will you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eileen McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Heilman.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay, consideration of the minutes of the May third meeting. Is there anybody any comments on the minutes? If not, I have some. Okay, page four. Under the application for North Elm Street. The first major paragraph says Mr. Vandero said, someone came by my house already. My front yard is on a private street. I think it's supposed to be a public street. Then page five. Fourth paragraph down. Chair Vitale said. Or Peterson's Brook, there was a cement pond, not post. Which is no longer there. It was a swimming pool, not a swingboard for the previous owner. All right. Any other comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of May third, 2023, be accepted as submitted with the corrections on page four and page five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And any comments? Call for a vote. Let's see. Jimmy, you're a regular member, correct? You're an alternate too.
I'm an alternate too.
You're an alternate too, so. Every, were you here at the last meeting? You were too.
I was, but honestly.
Give it to Jim.
The one that was absent, so the Republicans should be sitting in.
Correct. Okay, Jimmy, you're a voting member tonight. Okay, motion made in seconded. There was no discussion. Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
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 Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, we have minutes for the special meeting of May sixteenth. They're not on the agenda, but I think we can address them anyway. Is there any comments regarding the minutes of the special meeting on May sixteenth? If there's no comments. I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the meetings, that the minutes of the special meeting on May sixteenth, 2023, be accepted as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. No discussion. Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff? Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, now going on to old business, application A eighteen. Twelve point two thirty-two Barnes Road, release of a bond for Roland.
I'm not ready, no.
Not ready. Okay. Number two, application eight twenty-three, two point two. Eighty-six Barnes Road, nine fifty North Main Street, Wallyford LLC. Commercial store or development storage.
Good evening. My name is Zach Georgina.
Microphone. Bring it closer to you. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Zach Georgina. I'm with Giuliano Associates located four oh five Main Street in Wallingford. I am the project engineer on this particular application. I am joined today by the soil scientist David Lord, who did the wetlands reports and will be addressing the majority of the environmental planners' comments this evening.
Okay. So, all right. I know things have changed since the last meeting. What, Aaron, do you want to point out what the issue is here? Do you want them to make your presentation?
Oh, yes. They haven't presented this fully yet, correct?
This, the plan before the commission is what was presented last time. That was submitted the Friday before, but engineering and Erin O'Hair had not had time to address this applicant, this revision that was submitted at the last meeting. Those comments have since been forthcoming.
Okay, is this application the one you're building?
Correct.
All right, let's, let's hear what's going on.
Okay. All right, let's start in that case. Back with the current site. Just a quick reminder, eighty-six Barnes Road is currently a vacant lot. It has, over the years, had a variety of stockpiling operations performed on it. At one point, there was a dwelling, but that is ancient history. In terms of wetlands, there is a wetland along North Main Street Extension located here, wetland flags, I believe fifteen to twenty-five. As we go to the north along the border, there is currently a stream that extends along the two properties, primarily on the neighboring property, which is also owned by the applicant of this property. That stream will be addressed more directly in terms of species and functionality by Mr. Lord, but that is what is currently on this site. The remainder of the site is essentially field brush that has been sporadically mowed over the decades, but for the most part is invasive species and emerging species. What we are proposing, and this should look familiar from last go around, is a five-building self-storage unit with accompanying driveway around the facility. In terms of wetlands, our closest encroachment is proposed over here at the end of building one, maintaining a twenty-one point three-foot buffer from the edge of the wetlands area from the associated stream. The intent of this project entirely is to collect all water on site and infiltrate it into the ground. To do that, we will be utilizing essentially a giant concrete galley system consisting of a hundred and twenty-one four-by-four-by-eight concrete galleys. The entire site will be collected by a series of catch basins directing all of that water into this location. We're based on deep test pits. We have hit Penwood Sands and the water, essentially it has no restriction to fall in. We got an infiltration rate of six, close to sixteen inches per hour. The state limits us at using fifteen inches per hour, so this stormwater system as designed to handle the site is essentially thirty-eight percent overdesigned, but we're, our hands are tied by the state in terms of what we can actually use for an infiltration rate. So we are not going to be shedding water off the site. However, also to make code, we do have an high-water overflow that would be tying into the public catch basin. But as I said, the stormwater system is sized for the hundred-year storm and it's thirty-eight percent larger than it needs to be. I don't ever foresee a reasonable situation that that overflow pipe would be utilized that we're not infiltrating one hundred percent of the water being collected. To address the one remaining wetland that I mentioned to start with at North Main Street Extension, this wetland is physically above our site. Everything here, the back, or I say back, but the eastern side is going to be in cut and the western side is going to be in fill. As such, our buildings and everything will be below this watershed. We will not be depriving this wetland of water by doing this because obviously water doesn't flow uphill. So this wetland is being fed and David Lord will be able to speak more directly to this from sources from either a higher hydraulic, a hydraulically higher gradient point or flows from the area adjacent to North Main Street. We are proposing a footing drain along the backside of building one. And that footing drain essentially would just maintain any groundwater from ever interacting with this building. It wouldn't be siphoning water away as water naturally infiltrates towards this location. It would just be collected and essentially speed-passed by the building so there would not, would not be any flooding or issue with the storage units in that location. So that more or less addresses the site plan. And again, this should all look fairly familiar to you guys from the, from our last meeting. At this point, I'd like to open up if there are any questions regarding the site plan itself.
Well, what's going on along your river, as you call your river site? Is that a clean situation? Is that all on this map?
The clean si-
Well, I understand that some additional wetlands were picked up on that side of the property.
So that, that situation will be more directly addressed by David Lord. I do have an air, again, this, this came up yesterday. So I do have a overlay addressing that particular situation, addressing that particular situation. I have small handouts if you guys would like, eleven by seventeen, but again, this was a last-minute thing. I just was not included in the packets. Take one and pass it down. Feel free to remove the little arrow stickies. They point directly to the area in question. This, while it's being passed out, is the area in question. I've highlighted it here in a blue dot. You'll see on the smaller map that that is, that shadow is located there. As I said, David Lord would be more directly able to address this, but our understanding is what is highlighted there is a shadow from a tree. There is an area that we would consider including a wetland, but this is essentially a conservative estimate that if that shadow unlocated was the wetlands, it would be twenty-five point four feet away from our edge of pavement, which again is greater than our current closest location, which would be that twenty-one point three location near building one.
Commissioners, any question? Jimmy?
Yeah, do you have any data as to the seasonal variations in water table for that particular area of your impoundment?
So a lot of this area is not what I would consider a typical watershed. So speaking from a hydrology standpoint versus wetlands scientist, because again, I'm not well a scientist, engineer, I know a little bit about hydrology. The situation we have here, if you look on the packet, I believe it's sheet four, has our deep test pits. The water table drops as we go away from the river, which would indicate that this river is what's feeding the groundwater here versus a traditional situation where groundwater would be feeding a river. To explain that, typically when you have rivers, streams, they're in valleys where you have mountains on either side, hills on either side. Groundwater is beneath the surface of those and follows a trajectory closely analogous to the surface down to this location where groundwater would then reach out and that's where you would get a stream that, that's being fed by the groundwater.
You're on one side of that. You're, what you just described was a valley.
Correct, yes.
What about one side of that?
Well, hold on, let, let me continue here. So based on what we are looking at with actual data from the deepwater test pit, there isn't enough grade directly adjacent to us in terms of uphill to be feeding this stream. This stream is fed by the industrial park to the east.
Even in the kind of soil you just described, which flows like a surface?
So it flows, it flows like no tomorrow, but it drops, so.
If I, I'm sorry to interrupt you on that, but the reason I am bringing this up and certain commissioners on this may remember, many years ago, we had an application north of this area, not very far. It was the old Yale Motor Inn property across the street from Yankee Silversmith. And that area used to receive an incredible volume of water during almost any storm. It would literally flush in from the east coming down that side of the terrain into that valley setting and disappear. You have incredible ravines of water flow coming into the area. It flushes in there and disappears. The stream's gone. And what has me concerned is your description defining very good flow of water through a very porous type of soil situation, which is wonderful for everything you're describing, but you never addressed the question I asked, do you have any data on the seasonal fluctuations, which could be twenty feet? What would that do in that situation of containment if it was filled when water had to go in there?
Excellent. So from a deep test pit standpoint, we saw no evidence of modeling in any location. Now, modeling occurs when you have high, essentially seasonal high-water table fluxes where silts and fines in the soil type are pushed to the top, you end up getting a modeling layer and that gives you your indicative where your seasonal high water is. When that's not evident, one would assume that where the water is found would be the depth at which your seasonal high-water table would be. These tests were done in spring, which for Connecticut, that includes snow melt, that includes all spring rains. I would say that the evidence we found based on where the groundwater was located, that would be our seasonal high-water table.
Okay, but would you find modeling twenty feet below a surface characteristically, or is that where there was interaction through aerobic and aerobic interactions?
You'd be correct with aerobic and inter aerobic, but as, if we look at the numbers themselves, these water tables near the stream were found at close to four to three feet in depth. And on the other side of the site, we maxed the machine out at eleven and a half feet at a lower grade and found no evidence of any modeling or groundwater for that matter.
Okay, but you have no data for water there?
No more data than would be reasonably accepted on any other application.
What time of year was your test pit done?
It was done a couple of months ago. Hold on, let me check. I can give you an exact date, I believe. On April fourth.
And the depth?
Our deepest test pit, which is where our stormwater system is located, we maxed the machine out at eleven point five feet low grade and we had not hit any evidence of stormwater, or groundwater.
Excellent. One last question. What is the depth of your galley areas?
The depth of our galley areas, we had to, because we maxed the machine out, we had to assume that that was going to be our impervious surface. We couldn't go any deeper. So we are three feet above that location, that elevation.
Which is what that?
That would be, one second, let me just pull that. The bottom of our stone field is at eighty, elevation eighty-eight point five, which is three feet above where we assume ground, our restrictive groundwater to be because we didn't find any, which would be eighty-five.
And the elevation of your surface?
Was assumed at eighty-eight five because we hadn't found it. And we had maxed the machine out.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
No questions.
Debbie?
No questions.
Snow Shelf?
Uh, Snow Shelf is located in the blue hatch around the Barnes Road side of the building. Approximately six feet in width was assumed and that's between the fence and the paved area.
That's going to be adequate for that whole complex?
Uh, the majority of this complex is not a high-demand location where really most of these facilities are low priority for snow plowing, so there's a substantial amount of melt as well as volumetrically speaking, with the last several seasons in Connecticut, this would appear to be adequate.
You have people coming into the complex on a daily basis to get into their units. You're telling me that it's not, it's not important that they're plowed?
The daily trips at units like this is fairly minimal. From personal experience, I have been to more than one storage unit that is unplowed after a storm. That being said, we are providing snow storage. I mean, it, essentially, we are going from the back of this building where we're at a maximum, I believe, of ten feet back and approximately thirty-three feet wide for a bulk area and then along the entire front, we are offering that six-foot storage.
And, and there's no ice melt application whatsoever?
Correct, no. Sand application because of our proximity to the wetlands.
No questions.
I will make one comment. I, I have a friend who has a self-storage and they use no salt, occasional sand. No salt because the, are these metal buildings or block?
Correct, metal buildings.
Metal buildings. The rush factor is too high on them. Questions, Erin?
Oh, well, I'm, I, your environmental planners' report went out in the pack, oh, did not go out in the packet, I stand corrected, went out last night, emailed to you. I hope you had a, all had a chance to read it. I could read key things if you would like. It had, at the end, it has conditions of approval, suggested conditions of approval. In the, there is one extra condition that is not in your environmental planners' report that was in the email message itself, which pertains to this wetland that was overlooked, okay? Tiny, tiny area of wetland that was overlooked. And what happened, I had mentioned it, this particular area in my comments, but David Lord, who will speak, I hope, about the wetlands, he missed, he interpreted my words differently and he didn't realize I was talking about a third wetland along the river. So when I explained it to him and he, they got it, they get it, and now we have this handout, which the, and the only reason we have it is you could see it in the aerial image. So, but I understand Mr. Lord did go out there today and he can more flesh it out what this thing is that shows in the aerial image that I had actually seen back in April when I took photographs of the area. Now, if I, I went out there, oh, Monday and I couldn't see this because the vegetation is like a jungle out there. But in April, I could see it plain as day from across the river, from the vantage point of the nine fifty North Main Street Extension property, which is actually the river is located on the nine fifty North Main Street Extension property. And I could look over at this property we're talking about clearly in April. So I don't, do you want me to go into, into the report, Mr. Chairman, or?
What's that?
Do you want me to go into the report?
Is there something specific you want to?
Well, I just, I'll hit, yeah, I'll hit the high points. Just that it's around sixty-five thousand square feet of impervious surface on this site, which is a lot. But I believe in it, maybe Zach wants to hit it again. My understanding is he explains to me it, the wa, I said, is it going to de-water the wetlands? If we pave essentially an acre and a half here, is it going to de-water those wetlands on the north side?
Well, he just indicated that it wouldn't.
Right, because it pitches the groundwater, his premise is the groundwater pitches the other way to the southwest. In other words, normally it would de-water the wetlands, but I just want to underscore that fact that in normal settings, the water would be going to those wetlands there. I did go out and look at the riverbank. You want, Mr. Chairman, you wanted me to go out and look at the riverbank one more time?
Right.
I did, and everything looked good. There is an eroded channel, but it's up. It's, it's up behind the units on that property, on the nine fifty property up above. I did bring it to Mr. Peretta's attention. In April, I was a little disappointed that it wasn't fixed, but it, it doesn't affect the wetlands down there, so. Not directly, anyway. So let's see, what else? Mitigations, it was actually the wetland report, the second wetland report that came in on May first, did talk, it used the word mitigations and talked about in that report, mitigations in terms of the little isolated wetland that's up against North Main Street Extension. And it talked about, Mr. Lord talked about restoring the wetland, getting rid of the invasives there. There were a lot of fragmites, some other things, rosebushes, other things growing in there. Get rid of the invasives and planting some wetland plants, retaining the good wetland plants that are trees and shrubs that are growing there today and augmenting it and sort of making a border there. I put that as a condition of approval. We talked, I talked to Zach yesterday about, do you want that as folded into your project? Are you proposing it? Or is it something you want the commission to consider perchance as a mitigation? And he said the latter, so it is in as a condition of approval. I put that as condition number one, if you want to go ahead with this. And it conditions that they would have Mr. Lord prepare a wetland remediation restoration plan to be submitted within one month's time. And the key thing there for me, and I, I hope Mr. Lord can respond to this, is I've had on other projects when they use chemical treatment on the invasive plants, then it's a no-go zone for quite a while for new, for new plants you want to install there. So I don't know if you were thinking of chemical treatment or physical mechanical removal of these things or, but that is a problem, right? You have to wait a while before the soil is, can, can receive a new plant in there. Is that right?
I think that all depends on what herbicide you're using. Some herbicides attack just the root system of the plant you're trying to kill rather than broadcast everything that grows there, the ground.
I, I don't know.
But any, anyway. So the question is, is have you gone over the, the latest conditions of approval, suggested conditions of approval?
Uh, yeah, my office received them this afternoon and we have gone over them. The only thing we would ask the commission is to weigh the, based on what David Lord's about to present in terms of the species there, weigh the benefits to actually removing the established species to promote native species before making that a condition of approval. And that's completely on you guys to weigh.
Do you want to let your soil scientists clear that up a little bit?
I sure would love to let him speak.
Be justification.
Okay, for the record, David Lord, my company is Soil, is Soil Resource Consultants in Meriden, Connecticut. You have several documents that I've prepared. I'm going to- I'm going to sort of cherry pick from those if there are any additional questions. Uh, and let me back up and apologize for not making the meeting last month. I had car trouble. Uh, truck actually had to be towed to the garage to get the repairs done, so I was not able to make the meeting last month. But I have been working off and on on the project. And the first thing, and the most recent, is the small area of wetland that is along the north-central portion of the site. If I, if I can get Zach to put that photograph up, I can hopefully, yes, that one. You will see in the center, there's a angle point of the property lines that come to a point. Uh, and that is the area where the area in question that I found this afternoon is actually located. You probably have heard reference to a shadow, darkened area on an aerial photograph. Uh, that is actually a tree shadow. Uh, in looking at Google Earth photographs and enlarging them and using their 3D enhancement, you can actually see the tree, which is representative by the dark spot on the photo. What is there in existence is about eight, uh, six to eight feet away from the main channel. Beginning at a point where that property line bends, there is a lower, slightly lower area when out-of-bank flow conditions occur because the stream channel bends there. The outside edge of the bend, it actually forces water out of the channel through a water-carved shallow swale into a deeper pool or pocket area. That is probably on the order of three to four feet deep with no outlet on the western side. What appears to occur there is that when you have those larger storm flows, water jumps out of the channel, flows parallel to the existing channel, gets trapped to a certain extent in this depressional pocket, and soaks into the ground. This afternoon, when I was out there, this, uh, I had to actually cut with a machete to find this pocket. It's totally invisible to the naked eye, and it, the vegetation is upwards of four to five feet thick there. I actually had to use my soil probe and, and like probe to figure out where, uh, the ground was below me or in front of me because I couldn't tell. Once I got to a, a degrading elevation with a machete, I cut my way through there and actually found this condition. That area is most closely related to what would be a, a water course feature under your regulations. It's not a wetland by soil type. There's no persistent water table condition or connection there. Appears to be a section of a former channel that went through, historically went through this area. Might have been a bypass when they were doing the, the riprap along the swale edges. I don't know. But it has that linear shape of a segment of old water course. There is a, a couple of sensitive fern, which is a wetland-associated plant in the very bottom elevation of that, which is close to the channel bottom elevation, relatively speaking. That area, what I'm suggesting is that we mark it, we flag it, we survey locate it, and it can be put on the, the drawing map for further, uh, knowledge or basis or reference that will be. This feature that I'm talking about is about six to at most eight feet away from where the existing channel is now.
Sounds like you're describing a, a retention pond or detention pond.
It has some retention capability because any water that gets in there when the river or the, the water course drops down and flow, that area acts as a catchment basin. A retention swale, again, it's like 15-plus feet long and varies from four at its narrowest point to maybe eight at its widest point, and then it goes back to a closed loop. It's almost like a, a long comma, I, it's hard to...
But it's dry right now.
But it's dry right now.
So it's hard to call it a wetland, then?
Well, again, the soil in the bottom is moist, and there's a couple of sensitive ferns which are wetland-associated plants. The commission, in my experience, the commission has the ability to say, yes, it's a water course under the, the water course definition in your regulations, or you can choose to say, no, this is just a, an ephemeral catchment area that holds water but drops and is not persistently wet or containing water in it. In its most conservative view, we can flag it, identify it, put it on the map for future reference, uh, and use by anyone that's in the area. It really does not influence the project because, again, it's probably 10 feet closer than the area that is defined by flags three and four, but it's still 20-plus feet away from the edge, the closest edge of the development pad. And it does not in any way flow to or away from the general direction of flow. This area flows parallel to the existing channel. It's just offset slightly.
Okay, let's get on to the mitigation part of this.
The mitigation refers to the eastern, uh, pocket wetland, which I've looked at, I first looked at it in 2019. Uh, I cannot find any area of direct influence of surface water to this pocket. It is a slight depression area. There has been some regrading around the, uh, eastern, southern, and northern sides of it. There's some rock pieces that are put around the edge of it. It appears to hold water. I have never seen any water coming off of what I'm assuming to be the eastern, the North Main Street Extension side of it. It must be very slow seepage flow coming off of that road bank that enters into this area. There's no indication, and I walked the entire perimeter of this area, of this wetland that we're talking about. It has no indications of overflow. Nothing flows out of it. Any water that comes into it resides in the bottom of the pocket and infiltrates into the ground. Again, you've heard plenty of information on the soils here. Very permeable, highly, highly, high infiltration rates. It appears this area is, is exhibiting some of the characteristics that I find in detention basins in very, uh, soils that contain fines. They tend to seal a little bit and hold some water, hold some moisture in the bottom of the depressional area. But they don't have water in it consistently. There's no water table connection to it. Again, it probably more closely relates to your definition of water course. Because at times, it has water in it. It has some vegetation which is associated with the wetland. That area is very heavily, uh, controlled by Japanese knotweed. There is also some, um, multiflora rose in that area, and some other invasives that don't, I can't call them to mind right now. Those are the plants that we're proposing to take out as part of the mitigation compensation measure. Mitigation does not always entail wetland creation. In this circumstance, we don't have any direct wetland impact for the project. What we're proposing is a wetland enhancement or restoration feature. Vegetation change from invasives to native shrub vegetation, which would be beneficial for, uh, natural vegetation. It will also provide some increased, uh, wildlife habitat value in that particular area. That's the mitigation plan that I reference in here. We can put that together, that 30-day timeframe is no problem whatsoever. We'll get you that detailed plan, which will have species, numbers, composition, diversity, uh, how the plants will be put in in a post-completion monitoring program for generally three years out from the completion of the planting. So the commission will see how this particular mitigation compensation measure and the plantings associated with it would actually be successful and establishing.
But this is also a removal of evasive, invasive plants there now?
Yes, we, we have to take out the Japanese knotweed for sure, and I would recommend that we go through there and visually inspect for any invasive plant species and remove them.
Let's see then, comments. Ellie?
How, how do you plan on removing the Japanese knotweed? What's the plan for that?
There are a number of methods that are used. It generally takes a three-to-five-year period of time to remove them. They're extremely aggressive. They're, they're survival-oriented to the max. As little as an inch or two inches of root system can grow a new plant. The best way I have seen control Japanese knotweed is to cut them off, remove the overburden, and take it to a safe disposal area. When the, and that's in the middle to late summer. When the plant starts to regrow in the fall, it's also sending root, uh, food supplies to the root system. You treat with a systemic herbicide into the bottom of the plant, a cut-off plant because the Japanese knotweed is hollow in the middle. It's somewhat akin to injecting it, but you're actually just spraying, and you're also WIC application, a paint-roller-type applicator, painting the green parts that are starting to regrow. That translocates the systemic herbicide through the plant system, doesn't go into the soil. Most of the systemic herbicides that I deal with are soil non-reactive. They bond to the soil, they do not, they act, basically come deactivated when they come in contact with the soil, which is why we paint them on the edges of the green growth of the invasive, to kill it, to control it, and most importantly, to kill the root system. That is done for a number of years to ultimately control the knotweed, which is very well-established on this site. That's the best track record I've seen. There are other methods, covering the areas with plastic to kill off the root system. It increases the temperature of the soil underneath the plastic, and that kills off the root system. I have not seen much in the way, at least from my perspective, success with that. It's very labor-intensive, it's very long-term, and you have to maintain the integrity of the plastic cover. It's okay for small infestations, but large-scale ones like this would not be my recommendation for a treatment method.
This, this sounds like, uh, David, that there's two areas. The first area you spoke about and this last area, are these areas that we should have, uh, orange construction fence put up around them to segregate them from being trashed when they come in to build the, uh, five units?
My focus for the rip, mid, for the remediation areas as part of the mitigation plan is the eastern one. What that planting plan that I'll be providing you is a detailed step. That area would be ringed probably by construction fence to highlight, this is a no-enter zone. Don't enter the zone because vehicle traffic through it can pick up some of the Japanese knotweed and put it somewhere else on the site that you don't want.
So, what, what about the, uh, plaque cards? I mean, you've got a couple of areas out there, and then you have the, the brook or the river that's running down through there. Would it be feasible to put some plaque cards up? Erin can provide to let people know because the public's going to be in there trashing around their units and, uh...
The area that we're going to be working in is outside the fence or the facility. So, the people coming in to use the storage facility won't have ready access to the area that we're doing the vegetative rework?
Uh, David, if I may, I know, uh, Ms. O'Hare recommended placards every 50 feet, and those would be along the clear limits. Uh, as a surveying firm, we have historically marked, uh, not only placard locations but clear limits on these before going, uh, and having any site work actually done so that there isn't over-excavation, over-clearing. Uh, we are, the wetlands, both, the wetlands and the water course are going to be within the existing wooded areas. So, marking these limits, you would have to over-clear beyond the no-go limit to even have that be a concern of interacting with the wetland itself. And again, we are open to installing the placards every 50 feet as recommended.
So you're telling me now that then there won't be any tie between the former property owns and the new property you just bought? There won't be, it'll be segregated, right?
That is my understanding correct. I, I know, I know of no future plans to connect these two properties. They are, both sites are fenced in, and my understanding is they are to remain fenced in and operate as two separate storage units.
Debbie?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I, I found your description of that upper welland area almost matching what would be the definition of a vernal pond, something that seasonally is wet long enough to produce vegetation. It probably lacks a surface of water there, though.
I, I've looked at this area off and on from 2019 to the present day. I've never seen any standing water in there.
Yeah, it, it, it's more your description. It's coming down from the east, and it, it's settling there briefly, and then continues on, which brings me to the next question related to that. Are you doing any excavation leading up to that from west towards the east slope where that elevated wetland is?
If you, could you clarify?
Yeah, you are, is there any excavation going to take place just west of that pond, the high one on, next to the road?
Yes, we will be putting the building and excavating along the backside here. That is where the footing drain would be being placed to direct water that's naturally seeping towards the building, around the building.
Would highly porous soils then possibly have an effect on the suspension of the water in that little upland wetland? I don't want to see a lot of time spent on trying, trying to preserve something, a nice little wetland there if the excavation just south of it could possibly dewater it in what has been described overall as highly porous soils?
I think that is one of the focuses that I had in looking at the relationship between this pocket wetland and the area immediately to the west, trying to see if there was any outflow from the pocket wetland westerly. There isn't anything.
None in, none out. That's why it describes a vernal kind of situation, except there's no pond in there. There's no vernal pond. But the wetland is, is a so...
I hesitate, I know vernal is, is a description of a season of the year, but it also has a connotation of additional habitat conditions. And this is no way is a vernal pool. It does not have any standing water. I just want the rest of the commission to understand. We're not talking about a vernal pool. Vernal, meaning springtime, this is wetter than it is other times of the year. And that's the only, uh...
Yeah, the definition overlaps. Um, but again, I, I see no connection to this wetland to any, anything that's functional in terms of the system that's down there. Uh, so I'm not, I'm really not concerned about it. I just don't, would not like to see an effort putting into preserving it if it could be dewa, dewatered by excavations just to the west and below it. It's suspended in porous soils, and I think it's probably the accumulated of humus material that has settled on the top with dust, pollen, and everything else that has created what I have in my gutter every year, only on a much larger scale. Um, I don't care one way or the other. My last thoughts has to do with that little pond that's down below there. My last thoughts has to do with that little pond that's down below there. And Mr. Vitale, you could perhaps assist me on this. I remember long ago when the application just to the north of this property was being developed, there was a significant effort, as I recall, by the applicant to address the concerns of erosion on that stream that was coming down. And as I recall, he was only allowed to do it on his side and it left the other side and I can remember stating at that meeting, boy, you're opening yourself to situations where you're going to possibly create wetlands down below by allowing this channel to overflow. And you look at the direction it's coming down, that stream wants to go straight, it cut through an area that was never fortified, which should have been fortified back when the application to the north came before this commission. It was a choice of the property owner to say no. And we are seeing the results of that. Now, am I correct?
You're almost right, but the Mr. Mezzi who owned the southern side of the.
Right.
Refused.
Exactly.
Not say no, he refused to allow the northern side to be, ripdrape the southern side.
Right. Here's the bottom line, it's a channel. It's a channel that's been allowed to overflow and to create that little pocket what we're describing now as trying to protect because that's what we do. Again, it's not critical to the integrity of the overall system there. Yes, protect it, stay out of it, but it shouldn't be anything that would rattle anyone in terms of protecting the environment of that area. That's all I want to conclude with.
There is, and this is the last point I'll make about this unless there's questions, that southern side of the bank, the existing flowing channel, does have some protective measures in place. Actually, where the water flows out of the channel into this pocket that we're talking about, there's a, some type of a very thick geotech mattress almost. It's a thick layer. It's not a woven like weed block, it's a thick material that has stone on top of it. So there has been some historic placement of channel protection in that area. And it just coincides with where this jumps out. And I agree with you a hundred percent. The channel makes a bend to the north and the coming in channel is where it jumps out of the channel and goes into this little pocket we're talking about.
Yeah.
Again, we aren't doing anything to it. No activity or redirection of water or anything else. It's just would be a cartographic representation of this pocket on the site plan drawing. That's all we're saying. We'd be happy to do that if the commission so requests of us.
In my youth, I remember when that whole area, I think it was right along where the water crossed North Main Street, could be a little bit south of that, but it was Barnes Orchard wagon shop, wagon wheel shop, where they built all the wagons, repaired all the wagons for the orchard, all the tools, all the antique tools that were there. It was like you walked back a hundred and fifty years ago.
There's still, some of them are still there.
Pardon me?
Some of those are still there in the chain.
What, tools?
Well, pieces of metal that I can't identify.
Well, it's all probably part of the rims and everything for the wagons that were there. There was multiple buildings, I imagine that's where the horses were too. And it's quite a facility. All right, it's getting back to this mitigation. You don't want to remove the invasive species. I understand that that is a massive undertaking. I've seen other projects where they swiped each invigilable stalk, it lasted a year or so, and now it's like it was fertilizer to the rest of the site. The site is just crazy. I don't know if planting wetland plantings in that area is beneficial or planting them somewhere else would be more beneficial. I have a mixed feeling on that, so I don't, I don't know which way, which is the best. If you attack the invasive plants, the species, then that's where you've headed with your mitigation problem. Erin, comments?
Well, I wanted to ask, a lot of the plantings that are there, vegetation that's there is phragmites by the road.
That's the other one too that is.
And that's hard to get rid of. So how would you even attempt to?
Same procedure, timing, you cut in the summer, late summer. When it starts to regrow, you treat it with a systemic herbicide. Translocates to the root system, it kills the root system.
What if we take that same group of plantings and put them else on the site?
Yeah, then I'm thinking, you know, another way that we do on the town open spaces, we just mow, 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 like ten times a year. Is that another approach for both the Japanese knotweed and the phragmites?
I've seen it work somewhat with phragmites. The Japanese knotweed, it's not a good idea because it regrows from the root system. And if you don't kill the root system, it'll just re-sprout. You can actually starve the phragmites of food if you keep mowing. Neither of them I've seen and have a great level of comfort in.
Which ways the commission want to go? Do you want them to remove the invasive species?
So I'm a big fan of removing invasive species whenever, but I understand because we had the same situation with the Japanese knotweed at the tractor supply site. And after, you know, four or five years, they pretty much gave up on it. I know that DEP does spraying for phragmites with an herbicide. It's not targeted specifically for it, but it's not as broad spectrum as like Roundup that seems to work on at least controlling it in waterways that, because they spray it in like Candlewood Lake, they've been spraying phragmites.
Yes, there's a formula, the name escapes me at the moment, that is a systemic herbicide that's labeled in Connecticut for use in water contact. I can't think of the name right now, but there is something like that that's available. We're not really dealing with a water.
Right, but it, but this.
But the ones that, that I am, and this would all be done, and it'll spelled out in the plan, it'll all be done by a licensed applicator who's familiar with this type of herbicide application. And I'll also be part of a supervision team that will keep an eye on how it's done, when it's done, and keep everything in.
Yeah, I think professional would be very important and along with professional application is a declaration that you will not use glyphosate. Very simple. That chemical can't be used, it's been banned in most of the world.
Well, then, then I'm in favor of if it's licensed applicators that are on a yearly basis, I'm in favor of removing the invasive species. How's the commission feel?
I agree with that.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Ellie?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So there you are. That was the question that was asked. Now we go back to the original conditions of approval. You're in agreement with all the rest?
Can I just, just to comment before we, I can see you're moving forward here. There is a, the engineering department comments, the town engineers' comments came through. It was in your packet. Basically, there's a few, Zach, you want to really, don't go through them, but just how easy is it to fix these four things she wanted to, for you to correct? Basically, the project is good, the design is good, except if you meet these four parameters she set out here.
She will have revised plans that will meet all those parameters by tomorrow afternoon. We just have not had a chance to respond. It was received last Wednesday. And so she will have those for the planning and zoning meeting.
Good. And then as far as the mitigations, I know, or the conditions of approval, just to reframe it, the one that was added tonight, this one, okay, that's in the email. The wording was found in the email. Revised final plan to be submitted that includes depiction of the omitted wetlands area, and maybe we should say wetland slash water course area or whatever we want to call it, which was approximated on a drawing submitted to the commission tonight. So that would, that's the new condition of approval. And then as far as the conditions of approval that I put in the environmental planners' report on page four, if you could add to the, to the one about mitigations, I would suggest adding to that, I have a bunch of arrows, like there's five arrows. Add as a six arrows, monitoring for three years, a three year monitoring period. And as a seventh arrow, add a silt fence, because Mr. Lord said, oh, there's already a silt fence around. I looked at the site plan, there's no silt fence around that to protect, to keep people away. So either add what Nick said, an orange snow fence is even better, I think, than a silt fence, because it's up high. It's not, it's not, it's up higher than most of the site. So I think an orange snow fence or whatever around there to add that.
Those couple of points are standard in my planting plans.
You're in agreement with all the points that, suggested.
For the mitigation and the removal of invasives in plantings, yes.
And the suggestion of conditions, placards, scheduling, visits, all of it.
And the post completion monitoring, that's up standard in my plans.
Okay, commissioners, are we ready to vote tonight? If we are, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-three dash two point two, eighty-six Barnes Road, nine fifty North Main Street, Wallingford LLC, commercial development, be declared not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-three dash two point two, eighty-six Barnes Road, nine fifty North Main Street, Wallingford LLC, commercial development, be approved with the conditions of approval in the environmental planners' report of June sixth, twenty twenty-three, one through five, and the addition of an extra one, number six, that the revised final plan to be submitted that includes the depiction of the omitted wetland slash water course area, which was approximated on a drawing submitted to the IWWC at the June seventh meeting.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, can I, could you, maybe I wasn't paying attention. Did you add this, the orange silt fence around there?
That's, yes, it's on this.
And the three year monitoring of the mitigation plan.
Number one, add the monitoring for three years and the positioning of orange construction fence around the area.
Both of them? Kind of both.
Okay.
Okay, motion made, second, any discussion? All for a vote. Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
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 Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much on behalf of the applicant as well.
Okay, application A twenty-three, five point one, four fifteen North Branford Road.
Can you hear me? My name is Chris Zavidio with Close Jensen and Miller in Weathersfield. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor. I'm here tonight to talk to you about four fifteen North Branford Road. This is our survey of the property.
You can speak up just a bit, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so this project is a single family residence in the R one twenty zone. The site is on the east side of North Branford Road, north of the Olburt Reservoir. It's a southerly three acres of a twenty-four acre site we're referring to. And the reason we're looking at this particular area is that this five acre portion in the upper part of the property, the north side, north is to the left, is under contention. Apparently, there's a farmer trespass, so we can't consider that part of the site for this house at the moment. The eastern portion of the property is wetlands associated with the brook, that is the outfall of the Olburt Reservoir. And so we're looking, oh, the middle portion of the property here is heavily forested area that has potential for pockets of wetlands that we're trying to maintain. So we're looking at a three acre portion right down here. Are there additional limitations to this site? Are the zoning setback? This is the site plan part of the property. So this is the house we're proposing. This is an existing drive. This is the property line and the fence for the Olburt Reservoir. North Branford Road here. Zoning requires an eighty foot setback. That brings the house all the way back to this dashed line. Upland review area around these located wetlands. Our soil scientist cannot be here tonight, I apologize for that. George Logan wasn't able to make it. He's doing one of these someplace else tonight. So here's our upland review area. There's another flag wetland by the outfall of the storm drainage for North Branford Road, and this is the area that we are interested in tonight. And just also for the record, I'm still finalizing plans for the septic, so there'll be a revision to this plan ultimately for the sanitarians' comments that I wasn't able to include for tonight, but that won't impact the wetland area over here we're discussing. So you can see where the house location is hemmed in by the zoning regulations, the upland review area, and then the tested septic area that was done for the previous application for this property that was approved. Reason we're here tonight is this driveway that exists now is not a safe driveway. I won't even drive my car onto the site. If you're driving a pickup truck or bigger, you can see over the guardrails. But this driveway is probably a good, I think I have a detail on my details page, it's probably a good twenty or thirty degree pitch. So when you park the regular car at the road edge, you can't see past the guardrails. So to make this a safe driveway, we have to provide a landing spot. And that landing spot is only about twelve feet deep, measured back from the edge of the road, but that necessitates a grading like this with this associated grading that is impacted into the actual flagged wetland that I want to talk about in a minute. So this is, this is the issue here. This is the part of the project that we're here tonight for. And so what we are doing is impacting, let's see, within the upland review area, a disturbance of three thousand six hundred and forty square feet for the entire site. But within the driveway area, inland wetland disturbance area of two hundred and fifty-three square feet. So we're talking a very small portion of the total fill that's going on to this driveway is going to impact this wetland area. And the reason that I feel that impacting this wetland area is not a significant impact, this wetland is the result of the storm water flowing out of this drainage system. There's four catch basins associated with it. And the only time there's water running here is when there's rain. I personally visited the site at one point at the request of Erin to delineate the channel, and I found there was no channel. I originally was upset with my field crew, thinking they didn't do their job correctly. I can't blame them, there's no channel to locate. There's a roughly eight foot by eight foot square of what I would call silt and other sand associated with road runoff that makes up the area immediately outside of this pipe. And the pipe is simply a flare down concrete product. Further down past this area, you may find other valuable wetlands such as this pocket. George did not delineate those. He was requested to delineate the area where the house was going to be built. So if you've got anything else outside of here, I believe you, there probably are good wetlands out there, but this one is not a good wetland. I will quote George's comment to me from an email when I requested him to define the functions and values of this wetland. He described this outfall as without principal functions and barely any secondary functions, except to, with the exception of a secondary. It is almost 700 feet from the brook and 620-odd feet from the reservoir.
Jeff?
No questions.
Debbie?
No questions.
Aaron?
Uh, yeah, so my, you won't need any permits from planning and zoning, except a special permit for the fill, correct?
Correct.
So, but Commissioner Kern brings out a good point about the fire. You gotta, you wanna, you wanna see about that, so I don't, I don't, I'm just saying you gotta check on that.
What about aquifer protection, Aaron? Isn't the reservoirs right there, isn't that an aquifer-protected area? There's other regulations that have to be followed?
Okay, a few things, yes, that's a good point. Page two in the middle, to Commissioner Heilmann's point, yes, that's where I go into the distance from Spring Brook and the distance from Olbrich Reservoir, and that, because we have a provision in our wetland regulations that specifically relates to the location of a septic system, and has to be more than 250 feet from those, from those public drinking water supply resources. So yes, they're away from that, they meet that. Now, as far as an aquifer, the water division did look at this, their comments are attached to the back of my environmental planners report. So my planners report ends on page four, so it would be page five. That's the water division's comments, and they requested I add certain things as conditions of approval, which I have added into the suggested conditions of approval. But let me see, they've, they've reviewed this, the property is within the Wallingford Watershed Protection District, and that is, that includes some provisions folded into the zoning regs. It brought Spring Brook, which is tributary to the public drinking water supply and the muddy river, and the watershed protection districts in the zoning regs, okay. And then their comments are, areas to be excavated shall be protected against erosion using improper controls and so on, and the erosion control shall be installed before excavation and be subject to the review and approval of the water division. So before anyone starts moving that fill out there, and there's a tremendous amount of fill out there today, the erosion controls would have to be in, and the water division would be on-site looking at these things, okay. Then the other, there are other conditions that they wanted to see in there, that the water division sees reserves right to inspect the premises within the watershed in order to monitor the construction and direct the owner to abate any nuisance likely to pollute such water, and so on. Okay, and they wanted these things to be met before authorizing this activity. Well, they can't do it before we authorize the activity. Well, I came as close as I could do, which is we folded in as a condition of approval. There are two requests are folded in as a condition of approval in a final plan. In other words, we put all this, all those things I just read, get folded in as notes in the final plan to be submitted. So they're not just pieces of paper in a file drawer somewhere. They're going to be on the final plan, and that would be on page four, that would be under condition number one. I put it in there. As far as the engineering department goes, they looked at this, and those comments are also attached to my environmental planners report that went out in your packet, and the comment was, the town engineer wanted erosion control blanket on the slope adjacent to the wetland and the driveway entrance, so that embankment, they wanted erosion control on that steep slope. And that was the only comment from them. We did sit down and meet with the town engineer and the applicant in March, so we ironed out some kinks then in March on this.
You're done?
Well, if you want me to go over the other.
I don't think, I don't know what to go over, but I mean, you're, you basically are going to fill 253 feet of wetland and upland review area. My problem is, I don't think you got a contractor that's going to stick to 253 feet, and that's the problem with a lot of our sites that we give approval on. We give approval on your plan, but your contractor doesn't stick to that.
He can't go too much further than he is because he'll impact that outfall.
That's on one side.
Well, there's no wetlands on the other side.
Good point. Good point.
He can go over here as much as he wants, he won't hurt.
Well, that's the upland review area.
Uh, upland review area, well, yes, you're right. Look at my own map, that helps.
Well, if the commissioners don't have any other comments, I know we don't like filling wetlands, but to get access to somebody's property, we have accepted that as minimal as we can take. So.
So you spoke about removing the excess concrete material.
Everything except what we need to build the driveway.
Do you repeat that, Mr. Kern, your question?
What?
What was your question, Mr. Kern? I didn't get that or the answer, I'm sorry.
The concrete debris that is on site, the excess will be removed from the site.
And the answer, please?
Would you post a bond to that effect?
I don't think she has much choice, to be honest with you. If you'd like a bond, we'll post a bond. Pardon? Will you post a bond to that effect?
I'll let you, sorry.
I'm sorry, Deb, you haven't come up to the microphone and introduced yourself, and so we can get it into the record.
I'm Deb Lyman, I'm the owner of 415 North Branford, as well as the adjoining property, Blue Trail Ranch Corporation. If I'm understanding your question, you want to know about the cement. It was part of a sidewalk that you, that, of a building, steel-structured building that was put on 316 to clean up all of the bonset huts, and the contractor just didn't like the way the concrete was poured, so we just, he said that'd be great fill for that driveway, so it's just sitting there, it's clean concrete, and it will be used.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of material there.
It's under 400 cubic yards of concrete.
Do you, do you have an estimate on how many yards it's going to take to build this driveway?
Yes, it is.
On the map, yeah.
Hmm, 385 cubic yards to build this driveway the way we propose it above the existing surface.
So theoretically, if you're correcting your 400 yards, there should be a net wash in that area.
That would be ideal. However, we do, we do agree to remove any excess that there is after the driveway's constructed.
You know, that, I know you're saying that tonight, but two years from now, when you build the house and you forget about the concrete, that's what usually happens.
It would be hard to forget, it's in the driveway area now.
Yeah, you can't move past it until you get rid of it, until that driveway's built.
Yeah, they can't pour a concrete foundation without getting that stuff out of the way, and I'd be honest with you, you can't get a cement truck down that driveway. You get it down, you won't get it out.
I can't imagine that they couldn't use up the excess on the north side where there's no wetlands. I mean, a lot of area you can put fill.
You'd have to come through the treat area, and you'd have to, you'd have to extend the length of the driveway from what we have now because of how much higher the road gets as it goes until it peaks. It peaks someplace, I'm going to go back to the survey. It peaks someplace up here, and the house is over here, so the further north you go, the higher the road gets above the existing grade.
Yeah, but you've got a lot of latitude right where your driveway is coming onto the road, don't you?
I would say no. I wouldn't put it here if I didn't have to.
You mean this area down in here? Just where you're coming out onto the road itself?
It's very steep.
Yeah, this, this is an incredibly steep driveway. I don't know how they used it for so long. And so what we're doing, like I mentioned earlier, from basically the road edge back 12 feet, we want a flat spot. I mean, it'll be a slight crown to it, just so it drains correctly, but essentially a 12-foot space to be able to park at and see down the road without getting the guardrail in your eyes. You know, sight distance is what I'm talking about here. And then as that comes down from that spot right here, down into here, as you approach what we got for a final grade for the garage floor, 345, the road is at 358, so it's 13 feet above the road at where the driveway enters. Over here by the house, the road is at 364, so that's almost 20 feet higher than the garage floor.
Okay.
So as we go further north, that only gets worse.
How many yards do you figure you might have left over?
Uh, I expect not much more than 10 or 15 yards, based on what we have as an estimate for the volume of the piles. The piles may actually be a little more than 400 cubic yards, I'll concede that. It's not like it was measured. I mean, when my surveyors were out there, they shot the outlined edges of it, and they just said, well, you know, how detailed do you want to get? Well, detailed, time is money, so I said, look, you know, I know where the outline of it is, I know what they look like, we have pictures of it. They're not very tall, they're probably three to four feet high, but there's probably 10 or 12 piles, and that material, when broken up, will make a nice fill, so that's why it's been held on to even after the initial wetland's violation was discovered by Aaron.
Okay, I'll entertain, now, you're, are you in agreement with Aaron's recommendations?
I take no objection.
Okay. I'll recommend, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-5.1, 415 North Branford Road, Deborah Lyman, be considered not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I, just one question for you. Has the fire department approved this site as far as because of the emergency excess, egress and excess? I just don't want you to have to come back here in two months and say, I need to spend another 100 grand because the driveway's not adequate for what the fire department, emergency vehicles needs to get access to the house.
To my knowledge, the fire department has not been out there, but, you know, we can, we can check on it. They're familiar with the area because we get inspected every six months, but I, they have not been out there.
We, I think Nick is mentioning that because we have had other applicants have problems with, they can't turn their fire engines around in their yards.
Right. I do know that a plan on, that the site plan, the house is proposing a two-car garage, and it is very level where the house is going to go, and I do entertain quite a bit, so I do have a pretty large landing zone, you know, in front of the house, a flat surface, so we could definitely make sure that when we make those plans, that there's enough solid ground or driveway for any emergency vehicle to turn around.
And we can get a set of plans over to the fire marshal's office, see what they think.
Well, that's not a well-end issue, except we're trying to head you off from coming back. Okay, any other comments regarding this significant activity? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Entertain a motion or denial, a motion to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-5.1, 415 North Branford Road, Deborah Lyman, be approved with the conditions of approval in the environmental planners report of June 2, 2023, number one through three.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time and effort.
Okay, application A 23, 5.2, 69 Schoolhouse Road, Matt Luis?
I'm sorry, if you look in the agenda, this was approved, right, on the agenda? The approval was granted. That was the date of our last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't have anything specific, so I don't.
I don't think. 12-foot space to be able to park at and see down the road without, uh, getting the guardrail in your eyes.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, sight distance is what I'm talking about here. And then as that comes down from that spot right here, down into here, as you approach what we got for final grade for the garage floor, 345, the road is at 358, so it's 13 feet above the road at where the driveway enters. Over here by the house, the road is at 364, so that's almost 20 feet higher than the garage floor.
Hmm, okay.
So as we go further north, that only gets worse.
How many yards do you figure you might have left over?
Uh, I expect not much more than 10 or 15 yards, based on what we have as an estimate for the volume of the piles. The piles may actually be a little more than 400 cubic yards. I'll, I'll concede that. It's not like it was measured. I mean, when my surveyors were out there, they shot the outline edges of it and they just said, well, you know, how detailed do you want to get? Well, detail, time is money. So I said, look, you know, I know where the outline of it is, I know what they look like, we have pictures of it. They're not very tall, they're probably three to four feet high, um, but there's probably 10 or 12 piles. And that material, when broken up, will make a nice fill. So that's why it's been held on to even after the initial, uh, wetlands violation was discovered by Erin.
Okay, I'll entertain, now, you're, are you in agreement with Erin's recommendations?
I take no objection.
Okay. I'll recommend, um, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-5.1, 415 North Branford Road, Deborah Lyman, uh, be considered not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I, just one question for you. Has the fire department approved this site as far as because of the emergency excess, egress and, uh, excess? I just don't want you to have to come back here in two months and say, I need to spend another hundred grand because the driveway's not adequate for what the fire department, emergency vehicles needs to get access to the house.
To my knowledge, the fire department has not been out there. But, you know, we can, we can check on it. They're familiar with the area because we get inspected every six months, uh, but I, they have not been out there.
We, he, I think Nick is mentioning that because we have had other applicants
Right.
Have problems with, um, they can't turn their fire engines around in their yards.
I do know that a plan on, uh, that the site plan, uh, the house is proposing a two-car garage, and it is very level where the, the house is going to go. Um, and I do entertain quite a bit, so I do have a pretty large landing zone, you know, in front of the house, a flat surface, so we could definitely make sure that when we make those plans, that there's enough solid ground or driveway for any emergency vehicle to turn around.
We can get a set of plans over to the Fire Marshal's office, uh, see what they think.
That's not a wetland issue, except we're trying to head you off from coming back. Okay, any other comments regarding this significant activity? I'll call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Entertain a motion or denial, a motion to approve or deny this, uh, application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-5.1, 415 North Branford Road, Deborah Lyman, be approved with the conditions of approval and the environmental planners report of June 2nd, 2023, in number one through three.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, Jimmy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
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 Yep, okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time and effort.
Okay, application A 23-5.2, 69 Schoolhouse Road.
I'm sorry, if you look in the agenda, this was approved, right, on the agenda? The approval was granted. That, that was the date of our last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't have anything specific, so I don't...
I don't think that it was approved. I think that he asked about getting approved. Um, if, if we get out the minutes, we can read how exactly it came down. I believe the chairman granted administrative approval pending my review that all the bricks were out of there, I believe. Let's look at the minutes, the, the...
As I recall, you lost your microphone, uh...
Oh, it's still on, yeah.
It's in your front lap.
(laughing).
As I recall, you got, we gave them administration approval to remediate what was done, but not to plant the grass and plant the trees. Erin had a technicality that she was working on. But it was also done is if the first half was done, it was almost automatic, the second half would be granted. So Erin has been out there, has worked with the folks, and from what I understand, everything's ready to be granted the second half of the administration approval. What are the requests, is that true, Erin?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to follow what we did last time. I'm, I'm a little, uh, out of step here. I didn't expect Mr. Luis to show up tonight, um, because, uh, I thought it was all taken care of, but, um...
My, my interpretation was, it was taken care of too. I mean, I kind of just showed up just, just, just in case anyone had any questions or Erin had anything. I tried to call her today, but I couldn't catch her.
The discussion I had with Erin before the meeting, you were all set.
Well, the, that's interesting. The minutes don't reflect the administrative approval.
Erin, we had this discussion today, it was just a matter of you...
No, I know, I know, I'm just a little surprised the minutes don't reflect my understanding and your understanding, so, okay.
All right?
Yes. Yes, I'm all set with Mr. Luis.
As I recall, he got administration approval, but you wouldn't let it include the grass and trees, I think, in the original administration approval because that wasn't part of the violation to remediate. So now, he's done the, the first half of what he's done, and as I recall, you were, based on your recommendation, they could continue with the project, seeding it, trees, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
All right, so that still remains the same?
Yes, and, and Mr. Luis wants to put, and he agrees, I asked for, and he agrees, uh, upland shrubs on the edge of the upland review area and wetland shrubs next to that, demarcating the wetland area. In other words, so that the grass lawn doesn't just go down and cascade into the wetlands, that we have some buffer there. So yes, and he has agreed to do that.
Okay, so all that's been done, so there's no reason that they don't have administration approval to continue with the project?
Correct.
Commissioners, all, all understand? Very good, thank you. Okay. All right. Recede of applications, not the, the issue right now, uh, discussion. Fines, violations remain, cease and discuss. Okay, I think that the next topic was going to be, discussion is going to be the, the 67 Schoolhouse Road.
Oh, do we want to do 1760 total?
That's a new application, isn't it?
Right, but, oh, they're seeking an administrative approval.
We're still on number four in old business.
Well, we're in the violation mode right now. You want to do, do the other? Makes no difference. We'll do, let's do the violation mode right now. We can come back to the granted administration approval. Okay, 67 Schoolhouse Road. You have any input at the moment, Erin?
Oh, yes, um, the, uh, the owners of 67 Schoolhouse Road, uh, sent in a letter dated May 11th, I believe, and you got a copy of it recently. Um, I then, like a week after I got the letter, I, I called Mrs. Dres, I left a message and said, uh, I responded to that letter, I said, well, in the letter, the, um, she asked that the town help her remediate because it's going to be very costly, and I said, well, the town doesn't do that kind of thing. And I also asked for an update of the progress of any contractors. Um, because two contractors had called me, um, regarding, they were asked to come out and quote, and they did, but they, before they quoted, they called me and said, what's going on? Give me a little background here, and I did. And so they got at least, oh, they're here to, to talk about it, they got at least two quotes, and so I wanted some feedback. Well, I, I didn't hear back, but this afternoon, I did get Mrs. Dres, um, and she kind of filled me in on what's been going on, um, which I think it'd be best maybe if they tell you, or would you like me to fill? But nothing's going on at the site. The site's the same, uh, no bricks have been taken out, it's the same. I saw it when I go to see the Luis property, and, um, that's where we are. That's where we are.
Okay, and, and you would like to have some input? Speak tonight, remember, name and address, record.
Mike Dres, for the record, 67 Schoolhouse. Uh, we did get two quotes. Uh, one of the contractors had said that it wouldn't be a good idea to remove the material during wet season, so he would, he'd like to wait, um, possibly put a silt fence in, you know, I'm not exactly sure on the boundary or where he would put it. And then we had another contractor come out and the material he was estimating was a little bit different than the other quote, so there is a little deviation in between the quotes. Just the funds I don't have right now to remove the material, or I can't refinance the house because of the violation, um, just trying to find ways to get the material out of there, so I'm kind of looking for a little reprieve.
You, you have a contractor? I know your letter mentioned two contractors, correct? Are you working specifically with one of them at this point?
No, I haven't hired.
I don't mean necessarily hired, but is he working with you on it as far as where to put it and all that stuff?
So, yeah, they're, they're trying to figure out a, you know, beneficial way for us to remove the material at, at a closer distance, because if he has to haul it to, say, New Haven, it's going to cost us a lot more. So he's trying to kind of piece it together.
Can you get, uh, a brief letter from him on his letterhead that he's working in your best interest to get this done?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
So now, your, your 30 days are up, correct, Erin?
Yes, yes, June 3rd, they were up, yes.
Okay, so, um... What's, the next meeting is July?
19.
19th. I suggest we give them, uh, extend it, the deadline to July 19th, where you can bring the letter back and we can go from there.
Yeah, the chairman will send it in as well.
All right?
Okay, I would like you to take a vote on that for...
What's that?
Could you vote on that directive?
Want to vote, the commission make a motion that we extend this timeframe in the violation to July 19th?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the violation on 67 Schoolhouse Road, the, uh, the removal of the, uh, um, bricks be extended to July 19th.
Could, could you repeat that, please?
The violation on 67 Schoolhouse Road, the re, the removal of the bricks to be extended to July 19th.
Okay, can I suggest that the prior cease and desist order?
What's that?
Can I just say that the prior cease and desist order, uh, approved, ordered on May 3rd, be ext, of 30 days be extended? Just a little more official for that. Prior cease and desist order. To remove fill in 30 days be extended to, to July 19th.
Okay, withdraw that motion. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the cease and desist order on 67 Schoolhouse Road be extended to July 19th for the removal of the, uh, bricks and fill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I believe that was the, um, cease and desist order to remove the fill will be extended. The cease and desist persists, but within it is an order to remove, and we're extending that. Is that correct, Erin?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
You could have made the motion, Jim.
(laughing). I could use help.
Okay, motion made and seconded, I believe?
Second.
And you're including a suggestion from Mr. Hyman?
Correct.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Uh, Ms., one more bit of business, I'm afraid. Uh, the law department suggests that you take a vote to put the cease and desist and notice of violation on the land records, if you choose to do that.
Uh, okay, let's, let's see how next week, next meeting goes. Put that on the agenda for next meeting. Okay?
Long before they even tried.
Well, that's the other, that's not done with him yet. Okay? Good luck. Okay, now, at the same time, the notice of violation remains with, um, Little K's for this same issue. Now, what's the law department want to do with Little K's?
Uh, the opinion went up, uh, the, uh, request for an opinion went up a while ago, and it has not, I have not gotten anything back, um, yet.
So that, that, uh, notice of violation, cease and desist, et cetera, remains with Little K's?
Correct, and it's pending this opinion, which will be forthcoming.
There is, all right. Okay, uh, we're going to go down the list to 19 Tamarack Swamp Road, Bill Schubert.
Bill Schubert, owner of 19 Tamarack Swamp Road. Good evening.
You've been working with Roman?
Yes, sir.
Been successful?
I believe I've knocked everything off of the checklist, so if there's more to do...
Okay, Erin?
Yes, um, in your packet, you got a copy of Roman Mazinski's report that went out, uh, with a map. He drew this, I, he was asked to, and he did delineate the wetlands, because he's a soil scientist, so he delineated the wetlands on the property, uh, and they, it's on this map, and then he delineated, he measured back the upland review area, and then he drew on here the silt fence and so on, and the area to be remediated, so, which is requested. Everything in the report I underlined in blue were requests, my request to him as to what he, I would like him to do on this violation for the commission, all these things, and he has done all of these things, um, with the exception of one thing, and we'll talk about that. And, uh, but he's done everything, if you go out there and you're, I encourage you to go out there and see how it looks today. Mr. Schubert has worked mightily to install, I must say, you know how to install hay bales and silt fence, and, um, and has removed all the wetland material that Roman directed him to. In other, in other words, the fill has come out of the wetland, and, but then stopped right there at the edge of the upland review area. Now that what's remaining and what Roman is looking forward, is waiting for this meeting, is to ascertain how much fill should come out of the upland review area, um, because that's discretionary. So, uh, we don't want any fill in the wellens, but, you know, as far as the upland review area, we could, there's a wiggle room there. I was out there last week with Roman, I know, and I told him I don't know, he shared out with you, one thing definite, there are these wheel wells around these trees. No, no, get that away, those roots of those trees need to breathe, those trees will die. They got some of them a foot and a half of fill, like real close to the trunk, you got to clean that out, so I said that to him. And then in the upland review area, right there, there's like anywhere from six inches to a foot and a half of fill.
All right, Erin, Erin, how are we doing on the list? Uh, what do we do tonight? Do we end up...
Okay, so what I'd like from the commission is some sense of how much fill to take out of the upland review area, um, because like I say...
We're going to leave that to Roman?
He wanted an opinion from the wellen commission, in other words, do we take it back, all of it back 20 feet away from the wetlands?
I'll give you one.
And then grade up from there.
What, Jimmy?
I would recommend following up on what you just said, uh, with regard to the area where trees are in danger of being, uh, asphyxiated by the soils that have brought up to them. It's, it's okay now in the wetland, if you cleared all that, but the upland review area is in part there to protect the wetland, so the last thing you'd want to see is have the dirt on the roots of those trees, causing them to die, which would affect the wetland. So I would extend, uh, the concern to remove soil that is around any significant tree in the upland review area.
So I did, uh, he recommended doing, uh, wells with, lined with stone, and I did that, but apparently they're, they need to be further back?
Yes, the, the roots of a tree go out to the canopy of a tree, all the way out to the drip line of the canopy of the tree. The roots are all under there. So I did see, I mean, you did a lot of work doing those little stone wells, I don't know why he had them so tight to the tree. But also, it's coming back to me, what Roman was recommending, if you, no matter where you pull back, how much you pull back out of the upland review area, separate from the trees, and there are not that many trees we're talking about in this condition, maybe seven?
Eight, seven, eight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But is your slope, he was suggesting a three to one slope. In other words, you don't have the upland review area come crashing down into the wetlands. You want a, a gentle slope, so for Mr. Schubert to pull back around the trees, but also pull back the whole thing gently for a three to one slope, like, like yay or something. Um, so, so that was recommended. I didn't know if some of you want to go out there and continue this, or to give a directive tonight?
If that's the recommendation, and this gentleman is probably one of the better people working with us on such issues, I think you and he and Roman can get it resolved, don't you, Jim?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay, I do want to add one more thing. He, uh, Mr. Schubert was requested, and he did hire the, the original engineering firm to, right, to survey that eastern line because of the neighbor that was upset, you know? So he did do the line, it was just a little, few feet off from what you thought it was, right? And, um, that, that allowed them to establish exactly how much of the fill was over on the neighbor's property, and all that fill has been taken off out of the wetlands on the neighbor's property, but also on his property taken off. Now, there's a big old tree in there, which I, I had photographs of before and I showed you, um, I, I don't know why you're so interested in this tree, I mean, if it just, it's her tree, stays on her property, you know, you're going to make ruts going in the wetland to get it, were you really interested in its firewood?
That was the idea.
It wasn't anything about the way it looks?
It's, well, the combination of, is the way it looks and the fact that I could make some use of it.
All right, so the owner called me and said she doesn't really have strong feelings one way or the other, I, I just don't want the wetland to be rutted up by when you go in to get this tree. Uh, maybe if you do, if the commission is okay with that, that it's done, um...
You sure the tree is that valuable for firewood? Indications it's been in there a while, is it an oak?
Uh, it's not laying on the ground, it's, it's sideways, but it's 10 feet off the ground.
I got you some of the limbs, oak.
I can winch it out of there without driving back there.
There you go, well, I mean, there's other, other trees around to be had for almost nothing with the work involved. Well, if he's, if he can winch it out without, without going in there...
Okay, and I was going to suggest in August or something, if it's, you know, in dry time of the year. Last year we had a drought, I don't know what's going to happen this year, but...
Well, we're starting off with a drought. So, I mean, th, these are things that you, that you can work out on in the field. I mean, to have here tonight, if he can winch it out without going in the wetland, that's fine.
Okay, I guess my last question is, in, as part of this remediation, you know, with the three to one slope, take it out and so on, I, I think...
We just, we just discussed that. We just, we just discussed that.
Right, 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 but where I'm going with this, Mr. Chairman, is, do you want Mr. Schubert to apply for an after the fact permit, or this is just...
Well, so it's not a correction to a violation?
Well, a correction to a violation is one thing, but if he's allowed to keep half the fill he put in there, that's, he got, he got to put a bunch of fill in there to improve his backyard.
Well, I, I don't think with this, his cooperation, we need to have him, get involved in a total blown out application, and just, it's just a after the fact for the, for paperwork trail, we can discuss that, see how well you make out with Roman and see what's going on.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, and I, I should say, the Public Works Department did go out there and they, they gave Mr. Schubert permission to go ahead and build that retaining wall, Nick, I know you were, you were thinking about that, the concrete block retaining wall on the, on the west side, and the big gravel driveway, it does go over the drain achievement, and they said, you can go ahead and do it, just, and they sent him a letter, just remember, if we ever have to get in there, it's at your expense, we're gonna pull it all up, and we're not gonna repair it, so, and that letter went out from the Public Works, so they're good with that.
All right, any other questions?
I'm all set.
Commissioners?
You've got on your print here, proposed 1,500 gallon septic tank extended with manhole risers to grade, is this the area you filled in behind the house?
Uh, there's a, there's like a tree line, there's a house, septic system, tree line and woodshed, and the, the fill is among the trees, so it's, it's beyond the septic system.
All right, so the proposed septic system on this print is something backdated, it's not present?
Uh, when I bought the house a year ago, that septic system, it was a condition of closing, so I believe if, I don't know exactly what print you're looking at, but there was one existing septic system, it failed the perk test, had to be rebuilt, it was rebuilt, and then I purchased the property.
So, Nick, if I could clarify, this base map we're looking at, that Roman drew on?
Yeah.
I got that from the Health Department, the Health Department had in the file from the previous owner who had to rebuild the septic system, so that's why it shows on this survey, so he's lucky he has it, and there's an existing survey of his property because of these, this septic system that was built like a year and a half ago.
All right, so we got 160 linear feet of septic system for a five bedroom house with a 1,500 gallon septic tank, so what's on this print is what's in the yard now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay. All right, application...
Continued, we've continued, it's table...
Application A23 5.4, this is a request for administration approval, the name is Ken Rosengrant, 1760 Tuttle Road, Tuttle Avenue.
Someone here for that?
Oh, okay.
Come on down, sir. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Ken Rosengrant, 1760 Tuttle Avenue.
All right, Erin, this was started out, this is a request for the pool, a pool, correct?
Yes, in-ground pool.
In-ground pool?
Yes.
And it, it's up fairly close to a water course?
Yes.
Correct? So you've been out there, you've reviewed it all, you see any negative impacts to the wetlands or the water courses?
Well, unfortunately, all the impacts to the wetlands and water courses were done 30 years ago, or whenever, this gentleman bought the house in December, so just half a year ago, so, the, why the pool company didn't think it was a wetland or anything, a stream, is because it was ditched, and it was dry, so they didn't, so this stream has been through a lot, that in some, sometimes it, it looks like a ditch, but it was ditched for the length of the rear yard, years ago, who knows how long ago, 20 years ago, a, a good while ago, and that's why in the photographs you see it open. This stream flows through forested areas, it's a, a bubbling stream going over Rocky, Rocky Channel through forests, and then it came into this backyard, and years ago, somebody...
What, what impact is this pool gonna have on all that?
I don't think, that's why we're, it's before us, I don't think it would have any impact, because this, this backyard was filled years ago, there's nothing gonna trickle down into the wetland, into the stream, this, the pool's gonna be in the improved area, so it's...
So we can grant that administration approval?
I'm thinking you could, obviously, there'd have to be erosion controls, which are on the plan, I worked with the owner on drawing the plan, making sure those erosion controls were in there, up against this metal fence, this metal fence obviously is in there today, installed years ago, and the silt fence would be against that, so nothing could get down below, and they're gonna put in the cartridge type system, so they're not gonna pump chemicals into this stream, it's a pool cartridge filter pump system.
Means the filter does not have to be backwashed.
They, they can't hear you without the microphone, you gotta be...
I'm sorry, it, it, the cartridge system means that the filter does not have to be backwashed.
Super, okay, commissioners, any, any concerns about administration approval?
No.
Okay, is that an affirmative vote from everyone? Yes, okay, administration approval.
Thank you.
All set, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now, the issue that, on the special meeting that we had, this becomes a, a, I don't wanna say a plus and a minus, I think you find here that the original property, before the subdivision, Patty Clark's property had a major wetlands on it, according to this map that Erin sent me, I can pass it around, but you see, it's a major area with a finger going up into Mr. Tim Clark's property. So, as I recall on this whole situation, the, the, I believe the water flowed across the Pat Clark's property, and went into the wetlands, the complete wetlands there. The issue then becomes, Pat Clark didn't like her property being wet in that corner, all this down in here, didn't like being wet down there, and she decided that, to help dry her property out, to put a berm, stopping the flow of water from the Tim Clark property to the Pat Clark property. This has gone back and forth, back and forth, for a good number of years, and it opened up again when Pat Clark had all this, had excavating equipment in, and started moving into the wetland area, budding her, which she did not own. She got hers with a lawn, she got this, and got all these things. So, after all the, the hooting and hollering, Pat Clark has, has sent us a letter regarding the notice of violation, or violation, this is what she's proposing. A lot of this was, was convincing Pat Clark by the neighbor who owns the wetland property, because the violation really is on the wetlands, on the neighbor's property. So, Pat Clark, in her, in her letter to the commission, this is what she's recommending, this is anticipation, Pat Clark proposes the following remediation as it pertains to the violation IWWC cited in a memo dated April 21st. Anticipation, anticipated completion date of the following work is July 31st this year. Remove the low rock wall from open space side. Remove the bird bath and surrounding pavers. Remove deposited earth material planting in rocks, and install wetland plantings along the property line. Now, that sounds, that's, sounds pretty good. Apply for an after the fact permission from the IWWCC for the following. The excavated channel through the marshy area, planted grass lawn maintained and execute hold harmless to open space, drainage pipes maintain, execute, hold harmless to open space, gravel trench maintain, excavate, hold harmless to open space. Now, the only, the, the excavated channel through the marshy area, she doesn't own that. You can't, we can't give her permission to leave it there. And the same with the planted grass, she doesn't own that on the other side of the property line. The drainage pipes, I'll get, they, it's the same with the drainage pipes, and the gravel trench seems to be the only thing on her property, and I don't know what execute hold harmless means to open space, this, this, that whole paragraph needs to go to the Law Department.
Well, in, in general, it, it means that if they go on the open, if the Clarks go on the open space, that there's no liability for the Werner people that own the open space.
Who's gonna hold harmless to the open space? Whoever owns the open space? I, I want more clarification on that.
Oh, you mean who exactly? Okay, got it.
The gravel trench, is there a pipe in the gravel trench?
There, there are the two pipes, the two little pipes that we saw sticking out, one that comes from the footing drain from the house, one comes from up above and, and delivers the drainage.
Does the gravel trench they just put in, does it have a pipe in it?
Um, no, was Mrs. Clark here? Um, no, it doesn't have a pipe in it.
There, there was a pipe from that back corner, there was a little gravel, a little bit of a gravel trench coming from Clark without the E to Clark with the, across the corner, Clark with the E, and then there was a PVC pipe there that terminated onto, I believe, onto the Werner property.
Well, they have the two pipes sticking out right here, and I, I would have a hard time, I'd have to look closer and see if that was really a footing drain, because you're back up to daylight here with the house 40 feet away, if the houses, the house, this elevation's gotta be at least six feet down, when you say the foundation's two feet out of the ground, footing drain's gotta be six feet below grade from the house to there.
He actually said that he extended that, too, he said that he, it had ended in a T or something like that, and that he extended the footing drain.
Well, it ended in the wetlands that was on his property.
Right, and he extended it under the wetlands that, that are on the Werner property.
All right, so, the next part, the purpose of leaving the above stated alterations are as follows, no additional disturbance of wetlands and upland review, removal of stable, stabilized grass would cause significant damage to wetlands and upland review area, initial damage, initially damage was drainage, excuse me, initially drainage was installed by builder and extended by property owner, removal would cause harmless to wetlands and upland review area, removal of gravel, gravel trench would cause more disturbance to the wetland and upland, I mean, some of these things I don't agree with, but in a form of a letter or something. Now, everything on the adjoining property, the wetland property, that's maintaining the lawn, I, I think we want to let that area go back to nature like it was, was intended to be. I think Jimmy mentioned that the gravel trench will probably fill itself in, given time, not the gravel trench, the swale in the, in the wetland. Now, what does this do, the, the rock, the low rock wall from the open space, this, most of this started from the berm that she put up on the budding Clark Clark property. Did she tell you that she would allow that Clark to pipe water over to the wetlands through her property?
Yes, she wants it to, yes, there's two buts, yes, she would, if, if there's no interference with her grinder pipe, her sewage grinder pipe that goes through there, she was going to come tonight and tell me how deep that pipe is, so let's say the pipe is, I don't know, six feet deep, she didn't want it, you know, if you put in another pipe on top to interfere...
The pipe from the Clark property does not have to be very deep.
Correct, but she was afraid...
Because it's self-draining, and you're not gonna freeze and have a problem with it, you shouldn't.
She was afraid it would interfere, but if it doesn't interfere with her grinder pipe, she was very willing to have that pipe in there, yes.
Well, I, I think you need to address her back, the other thing that she misses, she's gotta stop throwing lawn grass, lawn clippings, yard waste into wetlands, so, the top list is, is very good, but add to, to stop yard waste.
Okay.
And going into wetlands. Other than the, the gravel trench and, and decide what this whole harmless means, I, I can't go through with the, the other top three, because that's giving you after the fact permit on somebody else's property.
Okay, so what would the alternative be?
Well, leave, you can leave it alone, but you're not gonna give her an after the fact permit.
Oh, oh, I get it.
Okay, and the significant down the bottom, we already know about the bottom, and the third is, is the, you gotta become more accurate or more defined on what this piping from the neighbor through her property is to the wetlands. Now, I know we talked about cutting the pipes back, but I don't know if that is, is a big issue, but if one of those pipes is up near the boundary line, possibly the other Mr. Clark would, could tap into it, and would make all the problems a lot easier to resolve, get the drainage out of that corner.
I know, the Vernors will accept the water coming from any new pipe, they said, fine, if anyone wants to pipe the water, we'll, our marsh will accept the water, so that's not...
When you look at this map, it's, it shows the Patty Clark easement going up for the grinder pump sewage.
Yes.
And of course, it shows wetlands around, but what you really find interesting is over in the Werner lot, or the major wetlands, there's quite a finger that goes right up to the roadway, and that's gotta be where the, the storm water comes down off of the...
Yes.
Off of that, so, I don't know who owns that, I'm not sure it makes, makes a difference, but...
Well, I, I went out there and, at your suggestion, got an ass built of the Patty Clark house, and measured, it was 44.6 inches going this way to the east, on the ass built, so I went out there and I show you, you know, where the lawn ended up...
No, that's excellent, that's excellent, I mean, that, that gave me more comfortable than if it was a 20-foot setback. If it was a 20-foot setback, they were 27 feet over the property line.
Oh, oh, yes, but it shows the...
Forty foot, they were seven feet.
Right, it shows the lawns about seven feet, but I'd like to show you this picture that I didn't really understand until Patty Clark came in today, let me just show it What I'm about to say is not the measurement, the measurement and the stake is interesting, but, do you notice, Mr. Chairman, that long brown area there along the lawn, that strange brown area? And today Patty Clark came in, and now I understand why that strange brown area is there, because, you know, why doesn't have weeds, why doesn't have, why didn't she put cute little plants in there, why, what's that strange brown area? Well, it turns out, when it, when it really rains, the water pours off the upper, the upper Heidi Clark property, comes down and pours through there, and she has tried to plant things in there, and they get blown out. That's what that strange brown, long area is, there next to her lawn, and she brought in pictures on her smartphone, and we... And she brought in pictures on her smartphone and we tried to get them on here, they're very small. But of how it really rips down through there on a big storm, not on a little storm, but on a breakstorm and constantly makes this area brown there. Okay?
Well, tell me, tell me why all the green area on the other side of the, um, bird bath isn't washed out?
Cause it comes here. It, it comes down there toward, uh, Maple View Road.
Why isn't the rest of this all washed out? It all floods that same area?
I don't know.
Probably being controlled by the landowners. You know, they got two pipes there. We talked about a foot drain, two or one. The other thing is you look at what's coming out of those pipes and you look at the nutrient load. When they built the soccer fields, they were real wet, but they're not wet now. How did they stop those fields from being wet? Perforated pipes that drained it? When people don't like a wet yard, might they put a perforated pipe out there to drain it and get, they did comment, they didn't like it so wet.
Well, there's no question, Jimmy, and this whole, this whole corner of that property was wet. We felt it walking across it.
Yeah, it's spunky. That used to be on the original map wetlands.
Yes.
And they've been expanding that, whoever owns that property, over the years, out, 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 out.
Right.
And the reason it washes out there is because it gets too wet for too many things to grow there.
And may I?
It's, it's a, it's a rough environment to take that kind of a load in an annual big storm, two or three times.
Now, I'm not a, I'm not a sci- I'm not a soil scientist, but that really struck me to be subsoil.
What's that?
When I was out there, I thought that that was fill, that that was subsoil. And that's why it's not growing anything is because it's, it's got no nutrients. I think that was fill.
I don't know, it's, it's got some darkness to it. I mean, you've got this whole flood, usually a wetland is all very fertile soil.
Exactly, exactly. But that whole area around the bird bath, it's elevated above the channel. Um, but it re- and I think it's elevated above the channel because it's subsoil and it was fill.
I've seen subsoil grow grass pretty easily, haven't I? I think you've got human involvement there. Yeah, that's, you mentioned that too. All right, so are, are we in agreement, the commission, on what, what, what we're doing here?
I'd like a refresher on what we're doing.
All right, you tell me what you think we're doing.
Um, you, you personally liked most of the letter, except you said the first three things you didn't wanna go ahead with an after the fact on.
No, that's, okay, the first paragraph, you wanna add no lawn clippings.
Okay.
The second paragraph, I wanna get rid of this, everything that's associated with the Verna property. And what this means execute hold harmless to open space, which is Verna property. I want clarification on that. I don't want any of that, actually. I don't think it's, I don't see taking the gravel trench out. I'm actually hoping that it can serve another purpose. The fourth, the third paragraph means nothing. And the other thing is to find out if she will allow any neighbor to, uh, pipe water across the property.
Well, today Patty Clark said, yes, she would.
Will you put it in writing?
Oh, put it in writing, okay.
Mr. Chairman, what, what about the fate of the buildup island out there with the bird feeder? Is that to be left as, uh, showing what you're allowed to do and get away with or leave, set it as precedent or?
Well, I, supposedly that pile of brown dirt on the other side of the bird feeder, that was something for her latest construction project that was gonna go back and be spread out back. As you can see, it's, it hasn't been done. I don't know what your suggestion is, Jim, on that, as far as you wanna grade it down, you wanna, uh?
Yeah, you, you could break that up and let it go back into the hummock kind of condition that it previously existed in.
Right, but do you wanna get a machine in there to grade it or just leave it alone?
Oh, I think you could reach out far enough from right along the edge here and then back it out, yeah.
I, I, I think you gotta think about that a little more. My, my opinion, you wouldn't be able to reach out, in, in some areas it was.
Well, you could, you could drive on that stone right out to that location and pull that out.
And where are you, how are you gonna get the excavator in there to do that? Or rubber tired backhoe might, but you're gonna rut up the lawn.
You dig out what? Who put it in there?
She put it in, but she had the excavator there. I think they did the lawn work afterwards.
Well, she put it in, she can take it out.
I agree with that. I second that motion.
Okay, put it in the list that she's gotta level out the open space, bringing it back to its natural, uh, grade.
Oh, I hear what you say. I just hear also a recent conversation with Liz Verna. She didn't want anyone entering her property, mucking around, just leave it be, leave it be, she was saying.
Oh, there's the other side of it.
All right, well, take out the bird feeder, pull the pipes out.
Pull the pipes out? Okay.
Well, to your property line. Just disconnect that, your property line.
Oh, no, I understand that. And again, I wish to the two parties, we're here. Um, Ms. Liz Verna said she doesn't care about the pipes sticking out in, into there. I, I myself wanted them cut on the property.
I wonder if Mrs. Verna has any concern what the wetland commission likes for a wetland, or maybe not.
Say that again, Jim.
I'm wondering if Verna has any concerns for what a wetland commission would like to see done for a wetland.
She's not, she, she's the one that got Clark to agree to this.
Well, yeah, they can leave the pipe, she can leave the pipe. They would cut them off right at that boundary line.
Cut the pipes off at the property line.
Maybe they'll wanna come in and discuss that.
Say that again, Jim.
Maybe they would like to come in and discuss what we're asking them to do.
I think, I, I don't think it's over with yet.
I agree.
Okay, you're all set now?
Well, hold, cutting the pipes off of the property line, okay, but what about this new pipe we're, we're thinking about adding to direct the water down from up above to the marsh?
Is there a plan for that?
No, it's just conversation.
Bring it in and make an application.
Okay, okay.
Well, we're the one that's talking about running the pipe. Well, Erin, Erin thinks that she's gonna allow permission for Mr. Clark to run a pipe across there of some sort. I'm hoping they can tap into one of the pipes that's there. And I don't mean the footing drain either.
Yeah.
Those things are little, though.
Well, one may be a
Four inch.
One may be a foot drain, the other may be something else. We could find out.
I think she, she put another pipe in to drain their property, for them to be able to fly into it.
Well, that would account for the nutrient load that it collects off the, what they put on the lawn. Cause it goes right through the lawn and comes out the end of that pipe and you can see the nutrient load that's being added there.
I just inquire about this, the, the Commissioner Hyman doesn't like all the filling around the bird bath. Can't someone just go in with a shovel and spend two hours digging it out? I mean, it's, it's not that much, or maybe a group of people go in, a bunch of people spend two hours. Wouldn't that just take an afternoon to dig it out? Am I wrong? I don't know.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Clark to come down and join us, cause he is the abutter of the property. I have a question I'd like to see if I can get clarity, clarity on. Let me sit up here. Just use the ti- uh, microphone. Name and address for the record.
Tim Clark, eleven Rolling Meadow Drive.
Please speak up.
Tim Clark, eleven Rolling Meadow Drive.
I really have one question. There's an easement for her to run the, the sewer line up to Rolling Meadow Drive Road. Who owns that strip of land?
I believe I do.
You think you do?
I believe I do, and I believe they have an easement.
They have an easement over your property? Okay, so in theory, though, Erin, also.
Um, the, no.
Did you have the map in front of you?
Yeah, but I checked that with the land records and no.
Who, who owns it?
It said it's, the easement is on, is owned by fifteen Rolling Meadow in favor of twenty-four Maple View. It's on this, this thing from the, uh, possession.
It's owned by your neighbor.
That's what our record, town records say. I mean, it's.
Your deed would say, I think, if there's an easement on it. Okay. All right, um, okay. So, Erin, you think that sewer easement is on fifteen Rolling Meadow?
That's what the engineering department researched and told me.
Cause I was gonna say, a pipe could be run not going on Patty Clark's property, but come over and then turn and go down into the open space. But you would have to cross your other neighbor's property.
And it goes up, it rises up there.
Excavators dig.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, that's, that's one way to help eliminate this, put some kind of a catch basin, cause you're not really talking a lot of distance there, uh.
Correct, right.
Thirty feet, maybe?
That was proposed a long time ago and they were pretty adamant that they would not let it happen. So, if she's agreeing to it now, that'd be fantastic.
Well, she, she may not have anything to do with it. Either, either the agreement is cross her property or can you get an agreement from eleven, or fifteen Rolling Meadow?
Which is the Vernas, correct?
I don't think so.
No, 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 no. Vernas thirteen Rolling Meadow.
And so the neighbors are above, yeah, okay.
Vernas thirteen?
Thirteen is the Verna ma- marsh.
And what's your number?
Eleven.
Eleven fifteen?
Do you want me to give, show you this picture?
I don't think I have that one right. Eleven, eleven fifteen thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, thirteen is out of.
Sequence?
If you went, if you went from Rolling Meadow, thirteen would end up being a backlot.
Okay, this, this is, uh.
Yeah, because thirteen actually is on Maple View and not really on, right.
All right, okay, all right, that's better. All right, so, in this eleven fifteen thirteen comes down here, that's interesting.
I don't, I don't know that water would actually flow without going really.
You could put a drain in here and come across and come at this point and, yep.
All right.
Right, Nick? No problem.
You don't have any pipes in, in the boundary realm, on the property line right now?
On the property line, no.
Where we saw you that day, we were out there with the stonewall is, there's no type of drainage there?
Uh, behind the pool, there's a drain that comes out, but it stops just past the pool. And then by the shed, there's one as well.
And where does it go?
Uh, gutters. From the house.
Where's it, that's where it comes from.
Comes from the garden. Where's it go to? Does it run down across Clark's property?
Ultimately, it ends up in that swale right there.
Right, that, that's the reason why you've got the little rock wall property along the property line?
That's why she put it out.
Defer the water from going on her property, but go down to the corner and sneak in the Vernas.
All right, now, does this wetland commission need a permit for that pipe? Why? Why? It's go, why? It's going into a marsh? It may be activity within twenty, uh, within fifty feet of the marsh. Okay, it does not, not because it's going into the marsh, it's activity within fifty feet.
Correct, and to increase flow to that marsh or whatever, but yeah, you got to install, somebody's got to install.
All the water ends up in this thirteen Rolling Meadow area. All right, so, you know what direction if you choose to go, what's possible? You're gonna work with Mrs. Clark and see if we can get those few other things buttoned up? And you're gonna try and specify the, uh, wetland plants?
Okay, sure, sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, commissioners, anything else at the moment? All right, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, Erin, what, uh, okay, Mr. Juliano Corporation. I'll give you, uh, I'll give you a brief overview of what you're offering for, for, uh, what you're, what you're proposing. Focus strictly on the wetland activity. And again, name for the record and all that stuff.
Good evening, again, my name is Zach Georgina. I'm with Juliano Associates, located at four oh five Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut. And I'm going to do a quick overview of ten Mansion Road to start with. Currently, the site is a residence, it has a dwelling, a garage, a landscaped, uh, lawn area. And in the back is a ravine on both sides that, uh, has an active water course going through it. There is a drainage trench coming from, uh, two catch basins within the road that directs water into this trench alongside, ties into the water course and eventually crosses South Turnpike Road. Uh, in terms of wetland impacts, the water course does have associated wetland area. Um, we are proposing no disturbance within the wetland itself. Uh, we have no disturbance to the water course itself. The upland review area, however, we will be, uh, proposing impact on thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three square feet. Uh, that, all right, upland review remain undisturbed, that is that number. That would be this, uh, light hatching here, uh, in the virgin upland review area to be disturbed. We are looking at three thousand four hundred feet. That would be this red area here and here. And then in a previously disturbed, uh, the developed area that's currently the lawn, the garage, uh, and house is in the yellow in this area. Now, in terms of why we're doing this disturbance, uh, Lost and Found Ventures LLC is looking to take this property, uh, remove the garage, uh, install a parking lot, add a restaurant with, uh, cantilevered, uh, three season porch out the back and make this a dining location, uh, and venue for people to come enjoy, sit and look back at the wetlands and the ravine behind the site. So, real simple, that's what they're looking for and those are the impacts.
Just, just start over again quickly. How did you get thirty-five thousand square feet of disturbance?
So, I, that, that was misspoke, that's thirty-five thousand square feet not being disturbed. And that is in the, uh, this light blue hatch.
So, you're, so you're in the upland review area and your total disturbance in the upland review area was?
It, 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 so, total of the virgin upland is three thousand four hundred square feet. And then of previously disturbed, that's already been developed for the residence, that would be an additional ten thousand square feet.
But the residence is already there.
Correct, the residence is already there, but we will be further disturbing that area. It's lawn removing of a driveway and, uh, garage.
Okay, next. Hold on, wait. Commissioners, any quick questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Why, why do you have two fifty-foot setbacks?
Jimmy?
Excellent question.
Jimmy?
I'm not hearing anything.
Excuse me, why do you have two fifty-foot setbacks?
That is an excellent question. Uh, in the wetlands regulations, because there are the steep slopes, the ravine in the back, it essentially extends a second fifty foot up and review from the top of the ravine. So, the first fifty foot would be straight from the wetlands. However, because that fifty foot is hitting the steep slope, we then have to continue that up, uh, fifty foot from the top of that area for a maximum of a hundred feet from the wetlands.
Is there any reason you didn't push it a little bit more to the southeast?
Uh, there, essentially right along where the existing woods line is, it drops right off. So, what we are trying to do, there's not a lot of movement space, uh, in terms of adjusting this. As it is, this whole area back here that essentially is becoming a lawnscape where this existing detention base, uh, drainage trench is, we are planning to fill and pipe that through, but that's not a wetland or upland review area because we need a space to put our infiltration system for this. So.
And that can't go south.
Correct. As you continue this way, we, there's literally a, uh, twenty-foot vertical rock outpropping that would essentially be pushing us into blasting in major earthwork considerations.
Contors would have been good on this map.
Erin, is this the location that the folks dumped concrete and, and, uh, a lot of debris on the edge of the bank?
No, that's next door.
Okay, all right, next one.
Thank you. Same name and company, new location. Uh, we are up at eight ninety-eight Church Street. Uh, this property is at the corner of Highland Ave and, uh, Church Street. What we are looking to do is to take an existing undeveloped site that has essentially three wetlands. Uh, larger wetlands. Uh, larger wetlands to the northwest, large wetland to the northeast that's sandwiched between a high point, the road, and an adjoining property. And then lastly, we are looking, there's a small pocket of wetland we would be looking to straight up remove as part of this. So, in terms of total disturbances, let me change sides real quick. Uh, green is wetland locations, the purple is wetland to be removed, so green's remaining. Upland review area, undisturbed, is that same light blue color. And now we're going into our total upland, uh, review disturbance areas. Uh, so we're looking at three hundred, eleven, uh, one thousand, one thousand, so approximately fifteen thousand square foot of upland review area, the majority of which is around this three hundred and forty square foot wetland we are looking to remove. Um, lastly, we are looking at essentially using a stormwater detention basin to handle this and to terraform that into becoming a mitigate, or remed, it's going to be a new wetland. Uh, just real quick for the site, we are going to have road coming in here, associated parking, uh, two, uh, multi-family buildings, and in the back, we are looking to have a patio area, gazebo, and some outdoor enjoyment for the residents.
We've looked at that site four times, five times, uh, it's never been built on, I go by it fairly often, um, the wetlands in there are, um, constant. Red maple swamp, I guess it would be classified as. I, I'm not excited about anything being built in there, but we'll see as the, as the plan develops.
Understood.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Is this senior?
Uh, no, I do not believe this is a senior specific, this will be an 830G.
The kids have a big wetland to play in anyways.
Second?
Usually I get concerned with developments about, uh, like this where you would have residents, like children, and where they would play, but you've got a big wetland area to play in, a lot of mosquitoes, but good, good play area.
Any other comments at this time?
Okay, commissioners, anything else?
Nope.
Second.
Thank you very much.
All right, Erin, you got anything else tonight?
Uh, hold on.
I guess not.
Uh, no.
You want this other map back?
Yes, I need that. I could, I could send you a copy, but I don't have a copy.
Do you, do you want it or not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's hope we can get this Clark thing off our plate. Okay, we're good. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, super. Well, the schmoke. You got smoke and gilfered up on the.